Hey, well, let's go ahead and get started. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a city council special meeting on remote access only, and this is a meeting through Zoom. Today is Tuesday, July 7th, 2020, and it is 7:00 PM. And with that, can I get everyone to join me in the pledge of allegiance? And I think we've got a flag behind Kim. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
States of America.
One nation, under God. Thank you. Kathy, can you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Dotteri.
Here.
Councilmember Peter Shagan.
Here.
Councilmember Frederick.
Here.
Member Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember George Stat is not here. Councilmember Ewing.
Here.
And Councilmember Taggert.
Here.
Move to excuse Councilmember George Stat.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Council President Taggert, can you give us an agenda, please?
Can I get approval of the agenda as submitted for the special meeting tonight?
So moved.
Second.
First second, all in favor of approving the special agenda as submitted tonight?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, Mayor, you have a full agenda.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have any council business?
I'll start out. Just comment to Chief Dyer. I appreciate the information that he provided for the activity on the Fourth of July. It was a very busy day for them, or evening, I guess, and so I appreciate that information. I would like to ask a question, because I simply don't know the answer for this, but had a number of constituents that asked me, in particular Lundin Park, there is a sign there that says fireworks are not permitted in the park, and that was probably an epicenter of North Lake Stevens here. So I just wondering, I guess, what is the, the reasoning, I guess, or the, the answer as to why we allow fireworks in the parks?
I'm drilling down that on myself, because I heard the same thing, and if, in fact, they were allowed in the park, they should not have been. So I'm drilling down on that myself.
Okay, and I, you know, I live by Lundin Park. I frequent the park just out of curiosity to see what's going on, so on and so forth, but, you know, I applaud the folks who cleaned it up in the morning. Somebody went through there early morning, either on the Fourth or the Fifth, and cleaned up the parking lot. It was amazing. All the things were by the building and such. With the exception of the lakefront, it was quite a bit of debris and so forth, but somebody obviously took it upon themselves. I talked to a Public Works employee, and he was kind of surprised to see it as well, so that's cool. People are taking responsibility for it, but again, a number of folks asked me the question, so hopefully we can have further discussion on this, and maybe hopefully next year, we can have a little different approach to what's going on in our parks.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
The only comment I have is, Emmett Heath of Community Transit has submitted his resignation, not resignation, but his retirement. He will be going on through until we have his replacement in hand, so it'd probably be eight, nine months before we can get a replacement at Community Transit for Emmett Heath.
Real quickly, I had a lot of people who are very positive about everything that happened on the lake on the Fourth of July, and thought that it was a good, fun holiday in the midst of everything that's going on. So that's all I've been hearing, so.
I have to agree with that. It was an amazing dedication of the memorial, and it was great to have our mayor speak there. It was very touching. Also, the Chapel Hill meeting we had, I thought was an encouraging first step. I can't wait to see what happens next on that. And I met today in a backyard with the Lake Stevens Historic Society to talk about the possibility of knowing more about Eighteenth Street and how that's going to evolve, and I appreciate that Russ is willing to do a walkabout with me and maybe some of those better view of that. And also, the senior center is adding a second free lunch on Wednesday, starting next week. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
I just want to echo Councilmember Dickinson's comments about the War Memorial ceremony this weekend. It was, it went off without a hitch. The memorial looks great. I think everyone that spoke, spoke really true words about what the memorial is about, how it came to be, and what it means to everyone in the city. Not only the war veterans, veterans in general, but to everyone that had a role in its creation, in its original configuration and now, and I also want to thank Mayor Gailey for his, his great words there at the, at the event. Very heartfelt, and anyone that was there knows that he was speaking very much from the heart, very personally. So I also want to obviously thank all the city staff that were involved in helping make that, make that a success. It takes a lot of hands to pull off events like that on a regular basis, and Lake Stevens always knocks those things out of the park, so. You know, my hat is tipped to everyone in the city staff that had a hand in making that happen. The other part, it's kind of been my normal spiel now for, what seems like forever, talking about the ugly elephant tromping around the country. COVID, the numbers are looking very bad. I was very happy to see everyone at the event was wearing a mask. We need to make sure everyone is wearing a mask, do their part, take every opportunity to social distance. I wouldn't say confront people who aren't, because there's reasons that people can't wear masks, but it takes, it will take everyone to be an active participant in us having the numbers to go in the right direction, so we can get this thing under control and move the city, the county, the nation forward. So I just want to urge everybody to take an active leadership role in fighting COVID.
Great. Councilmember Ewing, do you have anything tonight?
I just echo while I wasn't able, I was out of town, wasn't able to attend the War Memorial, but my wife was able to attend on my behalf, and she echoed very much what Sean and Mary shared, as far as being a very well-together program, and many people expressed their gratitude for what took place, and especially for the mayor's comments, especially with regards to the personal contact acts of those who have fallen in our city.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Council. A little bit of mayor's business. Yeah, I had the great opportunity to speak at the War Memorial. Dedication is a really good event, well-attended. It was great to have the farmer's market there as well and have that participation. Kim, thank you for telling me about Emmett. We're going to need to get him up to Lake Stevens and look at the Community Transit Center, get his ideas on it before he leaves Community Transit. Since I know him personally, and I don't know who's coming in, it'd be a good idea to get him up and get some thoughts going with him first before he leaves. I went today to Frontier Heights. Go by, check out the Frontier Heights Park. It's looking great. They've laid down asphalt trail around it, 10 feet wide, looks really nice. And this week, we started implementing some of the smart sheets within the, within the, slowly pushing it out into different staff members, and to start using that will help us out with efficiencies in the city, and hopefully look at some of the programs and softwares we're using and seeing if we can't replace them with smart sheets and save some money for the city. So with that, we'll go to city department reports. Gene, what do you have from your staff?
You, you, Mayor and Council, just want to start out by thanking Troy Stevens, our IT manager, for just doing a phenomenal job of getting the technology up and running in the new mill building. I'm excited to have Council see that in operation. He's been working on the security system for the whole park. He's been working on the live streaming, and we're doing some of that this evening, just doing a phenomenal job. So a big shout out to Troy for his work well done. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Dyer. He may have a bit more to add to our discussion this evening.
Thank you. Now, the, as I put out before, we had a busy evening on the Fourth of July. We were a little bit hampered. We had several officers that were, had a potential significant exposure, and so we had some testing and some investigation to that. The positive of that is, as it turns out, well, first of all, they tested negative, but the exposure wasn't as much as we thought, so we, we have brought them back to work, so we're happy about that. The Fourth of July was a busy night, but we, we got through it. As soon as I am able to find out the condition of the one person who was airlifted to Harborview, I'll let the council know. Thank you.
Okay, that's good. Anya. Anya.
I think Anya froze on us.
Okay, so we're going to switch you over to Russ, and I know he's got a new employee announcement for us as well.
Good evening, Council. I don't have any reports, but I do want to introduce Dawn Goldson Smith. She's our new marketing and event specialist. She's going to be in charge of the mill, so we're very excited to have her on board. By way of experience, Dawn has worked in the industry, the event industry, for the past 11 years. Most recently, she's been at the Tulalip Casino. She also manages her own website that deals with entertainment and lifestyle trends, and she has a family in the area, three children and a husband, just up the road in Marysville, and we're just really blessed to have her on the team. And if you want to say hello and have any comments, Dawn, feel free to the council.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. Can you hear me? I can hear me.
I can hear you.
We can hear you.
Perfect, perfect. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for the opportunity to have me joining the team. I'm super excited to see where the mill and the park goes. Been working on some great projects already. Got my feet wet with, you know, several big things that are coming down the way, so I've already been out to the farmer's market last week. Excited. I found out that this was the first time this year, and I was really excited about it, and the vendors and how everyone is truly excited about being able to have a space to be and be able to, you know, sell some of their amazing produce and, you know, just have a great time and feel safe and enjoy the park, so thank you for having me.
Great, thanks, Dawn. Let's go to Anya.
Good evening, Council. I just wanted to update you on the equity inclusion training per the resolution you signed a couple weeks ago, just to let you know the progress, as we've been meeting with several different consulting groups and getting some proposals that hopefully we'll be able to make some decisions and get you guys your training very soon, within that 90-day timeframe. That's it.
Thanks, Anya. Troy, I know you wanted to brief the council real quick on YouTube.
Yeah, let me, let me just switch over, well, for on YouTube. So we've, we've got a successful testing of our PTZ camera that's inside the mill right now, and so that process is going to be pretty straightforward, and we're going to use YouTube as a, as a repository for all of our meetings going forward. And again, we got Channel 21. This, this week is going to be the last week where SVT is going to come and finish doing the installation for the multimedia for that facility, and then on Friday, we'll be having a training handoff with some select staff members on how to operate the mill. And yeah, so we're very excited to get all this stuff working, but it looks like we're going to be on track to get all the, all you guys' objectives done, which is pushing that out to Channel 21, as well as doing some live streaming. And when we'll, when we have our first, we look forward to having our first meeting in that space, so. Be great. Did you want me to speak to the other department updates on here as well, I guess? Gene?
Yeah, go ahead while you have the floor.
Okay, so I just want to just give everyone just a heads up that we will be placing the order for the data center rack for the PD up there. That's going to be through CDW, an amount of 32,700. As you know, that we've been hosting our data center at the, at the County Shop or the County Data Center, and so we're bringing it on premise, so we have a little bit more access to that. As well, we're going to be authorizing the the CDK construction contract to do the low voltage installation of the cabling. This is for all the network infrastructure at that new facility, so. We, this is all within a budget, that's for the project, and we don't, unless we foresee some unforeseen costs, you know, we'll have to potentially do a budget amendment, but at this time, everything is in the budget for the project, so. We're good.
Thanks, Troy. We're going to go over to Josh now. He is sitting in for finance. Barb is on vacation, and he's going to give Council an update on where we are with budget.
Hello, everyone. How's it going? Let me give you a high, high-level update on the budget, mostly with the general fund. I will give a more comprehensive view probably later this month, but we just got our sales tax data through June, and what that is, is the receipts from April, and so we've been really excited to see what that looks like, and it's actually really pretty good. Came in so far at 52% through the year, and I was looking at June over June. If you look at June this time compared to last year, we're up 9%, even considering strengths and that. I also looked at March retail compared to April retail. We're actually up 16%, so when everything shut down, spending is still relatively high. That's a big outlook. So we're happy, things are pretty good. Property tax right now, we're right at 50%. Utility taxes are at 66%. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. The quarterly, the taxes is kind of quarterly, so it kind of, 66 seems high, but it, overall, the general fund is at 51%, so we're right on track so far through the year. I think it's a good start, so sales specs and overall a budget shortage of, you know, about 10%. We're thinking by the end of the year, but overall, things are looking really good. I wanted to touch on permits. The Center for Permits, really, really well, others in the city are pretty confident in the Lake Stevens market. I mean, building permits are at 63% of budget, and zoning is at 74% of budget, and I would assume that it would just continue, and we might even be ahead of budget, who knows? So those are all great points. The other side, we're looking at general fund expenditures. We're, all departments are below budget right now. We're about 45% for the whole general fund, and I think that's a combination of holding positions back, not doing certain professional service contracts. A lot of departments' trainings were canceled this year, so nobody's going anywhere. No one's paying for hotels or anything. But overall, we are doing really well through June, and I think we're just remaining, what is that? Optimistic, but still being conservative. But that's all the update I really have. Looking at the forecast, I know Barb's gone through the forecast, our COVID forecast. We changed, we reduced it from about 20%. We thought it was about a 20% reduction, but things are looking good, so we reduced it to like a nine or 10% reduction for the, till the end of the year. So things are not as going as bad as we thought, and we're optimistic to see what happens by the end of the year.
Great job, Josh. I really appreciate you giving that report this evening. Does Council have any questions for Josh? Okay, great. That was all that happened.
Steve, I do have one question. Are you allowed to say how much of that is online sales versus brick and mortar?
No, not really, but looking at the numbers, I think that's a great question. I think that the community of Lake Stevens just switched from buying brick and mortar right into buying online. So I don't think we've seen a big impact like other cities where a lot of their sales are brick and mortar sales, and they can't really make that up with their citizens, so. We just, all we really can see is certain increases in like Amazon, right? And we do see an uptick in Amazon retail sales in the city.
Great, thanks again, Josh. That's all the staff members I had signed up this evening. I'll turn it back over to Mayor Gailey unless somebody wants to speak prior.
Okay, we'll move on, and I as well would like to welcome Dawn to the team. She's going to be a great asset. Excited to see her work. All right, so let's get going with action item A, reclassification of human resources specialist. Anya, you're up to bat.
Good evening, Council. So the purpose of this is, is exactly what Mr. Mayor said, is to reclassify the HR specialist. Currently, to give you a little history, also including the staff report, is that this position was created in 2018 as a 75% HR and 25% executive assistant split, with the intention to help with communication and coordination with Council and the mayor and the city administrator. Since coming on board in February, I've looked really closely and worked really closely with Julie, who's the current incumbent of what the reality of her current duties are, and reevaluating her job description and to make sure it truly reflects the work she's been doing and what she's currently doing. So that is the reasoning why we're bringing this to you today is because the true reflection of her work is very little time is spent, if any at all, on a weekly basis on executive assistant duties, which is bringing down her classification and her way she's compensated and our salary schedule. And so included in your packet is the old job description and the proposed new job description, taking out executive assistants to reflect her true responsibilities, which would mean it would be full-time HR, and any communication responsibilities go back to the clerk's office, since they have the most communication with Council. This was also, you know, a support of the mayor and the city administrator to make this change. So after evaluating the duties, we looked at compensation, and I included in a market survey that showed what an HR specialist really would be compensated at a full 100%, and it looks, if you look at our current salary, it's down about 30% of the market average for 2020, if we were to pay her accordingly to 100% HR. So in order to bring that back up to market, also looking at overtime eligibility of her position per Fair Labor Standards Act, it's proposed that it be an overtime exempt position, which means she would not be overtime eligible, and we would want to place her at our range 54, which would put her 2.4% above the market range. The budget impact for the rest of 20 years is about $17,000 with salary and benefits, posing that we put her at step seven, which is the step that she's currently working, or that she's currently being compensated at, and which properly reflects her 20 years of HR experience. Do you guys have any questions? Kind of went through that quick, so.
Thanks for the report. I would say I'm probably not in favor of this. I like the fact that when we hired this position in 2018, it was supposed to be in support of the mayor, who's a part-time position, and is supposed to be here to support the council. So that's what this position was supposed to be, and that's why we have you, Anya, as a full-time HR person, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not in support of this. I haven't heard anything. Otherwise, this is the first time this has been brought up, so I haven't heard the reasons why or anything else, so I would not be in favor of this.
So the HR program has increased drastically in the last couple of years with recruiting, and the city has been expanding. Based off of the last couple of months that I've been here, there is a lot of deficiencies in the HR department that we could improve upon if we had dedicated staff to be able to perform those duties, such as a training program. We don't have a training program in the city. There's, there's quite a bit that we can do with this amount of staff, and honestly, we're working our tails off to keep up. You know, just like any, any other department. We don't focus on one area. We are generalists, so we focus on recruiting. We look at compensation. We look at classification. We look at organizational structure, policies, procedures. We do personnel investigations, employer relations, labor relations. There's been quite a culture challenge sometimes in the city that we've been working with, so there's a lot of work to be done, and so I don't want you to think that there isn't a reason why we need a full-time person, and from what I've heard, and this is no offense to anybody, but it doesn't seem like anybody's using Julie to the potential that I think the position was originally intended for. And maybe, Marcus, you might be the only one that might be receiving a service from her, so I would question the others if that was necessary. In addition, the clerk, the clerk's office, I have a deputy clerk, has some support there, and with a new clerk coming in, they might have the capability to assist if there are extra duties that need to happen with the council to keep that communication. As far as HR position, it would require Julie or anybody in that position, if you wanted to keep it the way it is, to be dedicated to come to council meetings, to pay possibly overtime or extra time to listen to council recordings, to keep up with what's going on with council, and to communicate with you all. Where, whereas that's, there's no other duties that would match that. She wouldn't, she wouldn't have to communicate with council otherwise. So it's actually more cost efficient if you keep with the clerk's office, where the clerk is always in tune with what's going on with council. Respectfully.
Anya. I say that my husband works in HR, and I know that's a very stressful job. Helping Jill, will this help you? Will it help the culture you talk about in, in our city staff who are all working so hard? Do you feel it would be worth the money and allow for more training and the kinds of things you're talking about? I hate to have us lose people. It always costs us when someone leaves our staff.
Agreed. Yes, I truly believe that this would help, not only with retention of the current person, but because she has a lot of great experience and a lot to offer this team beyond and above what she has been doing, and I think in our strategic plans, when we talked about, when we talked at the retreat about additional staff and how we can do to support the city, this is one of the things that I've, we need. One person cannot do HR alone in the city this size, especially at the rate it's been growing.
So, Anya, so let's say, just for argument's sake, that this position is reclassified, so fast forward two years, five years down the road, I mean, there's going to be thousands more residents in the city. There's going to be expanding needs. What, what does the HR department look like going forward here in the next several years? And how will this position support that?
So the reason why it's a senior HR position is because of the delegated duties it has of HR, coordinating benefits and the LNI program. So if we were strategically to add more positions in the future with the growth of the city, it would be appropriate then to add an HR technician or something at a lower level to help support administrative HR functions at a lower level. Does that answer your question? Does that answer your question?
Kind of, so if, um, fingers maybe, so she, let's just say for that position just went away, the person left that position, who would assume those responsibilities?
If she left and we didn't have this position?
Correct. I mean, if you have the position, whenever, who would assume those responsibilities?
Well, it would probably be me, more than eighty to a hundred hours a week. Because the work's not gonna go away. The amount of staff doesn't go away. So, um, if you lose a, a position, you're losing product service delivery. And the potential to cost even more when you hire professional services than to come in and do your training or come in and administer HR programs.
Anya, has, has there been any, uh, impact due to the COVID as far as reporting or anything of that sort? That we could possibly utilize some of our cares money to cover this for the next six months?
We have been coding any COVID work to, um, our COVID project code in our time sheets. So that will, I think, um, working with Barb, I think that will be coming out of the, the cares.
So in regards to reporting though and such, has that kind of fallen on HR to, for additional administrative work or?
There has been some addition, um, especially in the beginning. It's kind of tapered off now. Um, I've been mostly assuming the COVID rules. Julie's been also keeping, um, in the loop on, you know, the laws, the policies, all the federal, um, communications, OSHA regulations, LNI. So there has been some upkeep, but we've been coding it to COVID. Um, so there has additional duties, um, on top of that slightly.
Potential that we can cover some of these. If we choo- chose to go this route, there is a potential we could cover some of these costs with that stimulus money.
Possibly. I'd have to chat with Barb and Josh about how to craft that, but that's not a bad idea.
Thank you.
I'd be interested to hear if there's any COVID money and that can cover this position before I would be willing to vote positively for it.
On, Anya, did you see what the increase was gonna be for, for that position yearly increase?
The yearly increase, the, the dollar amount or the percent, percentage or?
The dollar amount.
The difference per year, um, for a full year is thirty-four thousand.
That's, that's what benefits, right?
Yes.
I would suggest that we try to explore to see if we could, I mean, I, I get where you're coming from. Uh, the world's getting more complicated all the time with, uh, human resources. But I, um, I would, I would think, I would hope that we could, um, you know, some of this stuff is COVID related that we could Band-Aid that, I guess, and, and make that work.
I mean, it's only gonna help for, you know, the time that COVID lasts, I guess. Um, but I would like to add that, um, it's not really fair to the employee that we are classifying her, um, I, against what the reality of what she is working. So, um, she's told me and expressed to me that she spends, um, maybe an hour a month. Um, which equates to very, very little of her work, which is bringing down her compensation. Um, I think, and so I think it's, um, I think it is even a risk to the city not to reclassify her. Um, because of, it's not reflecting her true duties, what she's doing on the daily.
And Anya, I'll just add to that. I appreciate what everybody's saying. Um, the, the driver behind this is the city's grown substantially. And if you look at our employment numbers over the last three years, and maybe, um, Josh can chime in, but I want to say we've increased our staff or, or almost sixty percent. And Julie is the one that's doing the lion's share of that hiring in that she sets up the process. She does the advertising, she helps update the job descriptions, and then she does all the onboard, well, sets up all the interview questions, sets up the interviews. Does all the onboard of the new employees, gets their medical setup. All of that type of work is being done by Julie right now, and I don't know quite honestly how it would ever happen, uh, without her onboard helping and getting, um, the pay to support the, the work she's doing. Um, I, you know, I understand that we've migrated away from her helping the, um, council. And that's just been, um, a reality that we've got positions we have to hire. I think we're down almost ten positions currently in public works from attrition and positions that we haven't filled due to, you know, COVID concerns. So at any rate, I just want to, um, support this. Uh, I, I believe the city a hundred percent needs it. We are so understaffed throughout the whole organization, and this is just another position that I'm concerned about.
I, I would like to hear from the other council members and I'll mute myself here in just a moment, but with the rosy numbers, I guess you would say that Josh has given us, it seems to me that we could make this happen. So, um, we are, we are moving along in a positive manner. We're not impacted as we thought we were going to be, so I would support this. And hopefully the other council members I would like to hear from. Thank you.
Okay, so I got a question that's gonna come out of left field. I hope I'm not putting anybody on the spot, except for Anya. I want to put you on the spot. So you said we're down, Jean said we're down about ten positions in public works. Is that, is that what I heard? How many other positions are we? Are we supposed to have filled that are not filled by our budget?
Um, we have the, we have a GIS analyst that's on hold. We have a permit coordinator lead. We have a principal planner. Um.
Now, those are on holds or they were, they were already hired but didn't left?
Nope, they were, they're on hold. Their positions that were approved in the budget for two thousand twenty, and then we have not hired them yet because of various reasons. Um, and then the rest, I think, are all public works that Jean's referring to.
Do we have anything in law enforcement?
No.
I would support this, Anya. I think, um, helping our wonderful city staff do a better job and feel appreciated is something I fight for every day. I hope everybody knows I never go over there that I don't thank you guys for all the work you're doing. And so I.
Thank you, Mary.
Well, I have to remain consistent the way I have been for the last eleven years, and that is if the staff needs help or needs tools or whatever, I'm uh, I'm behind that. So I'm gonna, I would support this also.
Thank you.
I, I'm just curious, and maybe it's a question for Josh, uh, maybe it's a question for Anya. In consideration of our financial position, um, it is, is I recall most of the revenues were somewhere around fifty. Um, if I remember the statement, there was something, there was something like fifty-six percent of, of, uh, budgets compared to the previous year.
What, so for twenty twenty, we budgeted essentially like a ten percent increase over the prior year because the economy was going really good. And then COVID hit and we thought we were gonna see a drastic drop, but what we're seeing is we're, we're kind of right at fifty percent. I think by the end of the year, we will be down, we, just not as much as we thought. Uh, enough that we could weather, you know, so it's not a huge impact to our forecast long-term. So I would say that a cost like this, yes, you can cover it. Um, revenues were, hopefully will stay on budget. They might be a little lower, but it's not as bad as we thought. Long-term, this, a position like this or any position we add, will have a long-term impact, um, to our forecasts.
Well, in, in regards to the forecast, then the position where we are, uh, expenditures at forty-five percent. Uh, that, that doesn't take into account the savings from the ten positions that currently aren't generating costs, correct? I mean, there's.
Yeah, partially. So some positions are general fund, some of them are street funds, some of them are stormwater fund. So a lot of public works are actually spread out. Um, the, the forty-five percent number in the general fund does have to do with positions being held, mostly planning, like the principal planner and little pieces of public works, uh, positions are in the general fund, but not that much. Um, a lot of those public works employees are surface water, storm-related funds.
Alright, my, my concern is just really if we, if we don't have all the positions that we're supposed to have, and we fill a position that in the, the natural course of the work of that position is going to be moving towards filling those positions. The next time we have the conversation about our financial position and as we start to move towards the budget process, I wonder, do we create something that isn't sustainable? That would be my only concern. Um, I, I, I agree, you know, we have to make sure the staff have the tools that they need to be able to do, do that work. The, uh, the last thing we want to do is, is put ourselves in a, in a no-win situation, uh, six months from now. That's, that's my only comment.
That's my concern as well. We don't have ten positions that are filled and we're looking to upgrade positions and so forth. That's my concern is being financially responsible right now. And I, I think that Julie does great work and I have nothing but great thoughts about Julie and so forth, but it's about being financially responsible. That's, that's my, that's my only take. I think Julie does great work and that's nothing against her and but once again, she's supposed to be helping the mayor out, uh, which is a part-time position and she's supposed to be helping the council out. And she's doing other things as well. So I, you know, I understand that she might be working outside of her job description and so forth, and I understand that, but um, the concern is financial responsibility right now.
Josh, I have another question, I guess, about the budget. Is that cost savings for those positions that were already budgeted? Um, if we were to fill those, we still have that cost savings though from that forty-five percent. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, we have a cost savings for every position that we budgeted for January that we haven't hired till. So if you hire them in October, you get eight months worth of savings. Yes.
Right. I just want to make that clear.
Okay, we've had good discussion on this. Do we have a motion or what's the council's pleasure on this?
I'll make a motion to, uh, authorize the reclassification of the human resources specialist. Is that all we're looking for in, for a motion?
Yeah, I think.
And compensation to match the same.
Per the schedule that's attached in the packet here.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion, uh, to reclassify the human resources, um, specialist to the, um, uh, pay rate is, um, I missed it. I missed it, Anya. What do I want to say?
I, you can say the pay range of NRE fifty-four.
To the pay range of NRE fifty-four. Does that work for you, Gary, for a motion?
Yes, that works.
Okay, do I have any discussion on the motion?
I have one question. Uh, is that gonna be, um, effective one, um, Anya?
Um, we can make it effective immediately. Uh, I was proposing July first, um, so immediately or you can do what the council wishes. You can do it at the end of the month as well when the new clerk comes on.
I would think that'd be appropriate when the new clerk comes on board.
Okay.
Okay.
My second's an amendment.
Okay. So I, uh, we do have an amendment to the motion, and that is that the pay, that the pay increase would begin when the new city clerk position comes on board, which should be uh, towards the end, end of July or first of August. Do I have any, and I have a second on that amendment. Do I have any discussion on the amendment? Um, all those in favor, Kathy, let's go and do a roll call on the amendment, please.
You're on mute, Kathy.
You're muted, Kathy.
Councilmember Dotree.
Hi.
Uh, councilmember Peter Shagan.
Hi.
Councilmember Frederick.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Hi.
Uh, councilmember Dickinson.
Hi.
Councilmember Ewing.
Hi.
And councilmember Taget.
Nay.
Okay, so I have a pass on the amendment. Let's go back to the original motion. Is there any additional discussion on the original motion? See, no discussion. Uh, Kathy, can I get a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Dotree.
Hi.
Councilmember Peter Shagan.
Hi.
Councilmember Frederick.
Hi.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Hi.
Councilmember Ewing.
Hi.
And councilmember Taget.
Nay.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, council.
Great, let's move on to action item, uh, B, which is mayor's position, full-time versus full-time. And I think Jean's gonna kick that one off.
I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first want to start out by, uh, saying what a great job, um, Mayor Gailey is doing, just a phenomenal job. But as I look at these reclasses, I look at the position, the work that's being accomplished. And that's how I make my decisions on moving forward. And I don't care what position is within the city. That's what you, we should look at is the, the position, the work, not the person necessarily. Um, so in this case, you know, we've, we've talked about a full-time mayor position, even when former mayor Spencer was on board. Uh, there's a tremendous amount of time in the mayor role trying to, uh, make all the meetings that are outside um, interest meetings is way, I throw them into a bucket. So meeting Snowy County tomorrow, doing all the transportation planning that we've done for uh, the Highway Two corridor, all of those types of things. The mayor's meetings that happen every week, um, following up on citizen concerns. Uh, currently, uh, our existing mayor Gailey is, is taking a very active role in the downtown planning, talking with developers, bringing people together to, uh, sustain interest in the downtown, working on future city campus planning and helping with project tracking. Mayor Gailey's taken a very active role as the mayor, and it's the mayor's role to be looking at the city's operations and helping to, uh, streamline operations and, um, uh, bring savings to the city. And, and that's what the mayor's role really is, be the team leader and facilitate that role. Currently, uh, the mayor, and it was when, um, former mayor Spencer was there, is operating in full-time capacity. And so uh, with the city's growth, I, I know we just had some discussion about budget, but I, the work is there. And our existing mayor, again, is doing an exceptional job. The work's there for a full-time mayor and I, I, I'm happy to bring this forward. I will talk, or turn it over to Anya to talk about the process of, uh, how to move forward should the council entertain this.
Yes, so, um, if you would, if you approve, we would take this to the Salary Commission who would establish, uh, the salary level for a full-time mayor. Um, and using, uh, comparables, uh, through, throughout the state. Um, and just to give you a snapshot idea of a couple cities around us, um, the city of Marysville, uh, monthly salary for mayor is eleven thousand five fifty-eight, and the city of, let's see, um, Lynnwood is eighty-nine twenty-seven. Um, and they all vary with, uh, different types of benefit packages as well. So that would be, um, the salary, the Salary Commission's task. We would convene them and get a quorum and task them with coming up with a salary. Um, and, uh, uh, passing that.
Is there a way, Anya? So I'm just looking, I want to say the, the current compensation is like twenty-six hundred dollars a month. Um, you know, so for someone that's putting in, um, I don't know the time sheet saying for the mayor, but I'm guessing at least full-time hours. Um, so that means it technically is working for less than minimum wage or around minimum wage, which just doesn't, even, even if we don't move forward and move it to a full-time position and say it's a half-time position, is there a way that the Salary Commission can say, hey, a half-time person shouldn't be compensated less than the minimum wage? I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me, especially for a high-level executive position.
I mean, certainly the salary commission meets every year to look at the mayor's and the city council's salary. So that's something they could look at. Any other questions or discussion?
I, um, I talked briefly with council member Ewing about this issue and also with city administrator. My kind of request for more putting this on the agenda was more of an exploratory type uh, exercise in the sense of, you know, what comparable cities, when did they make that jump as to what population and so forth? Um, and what type of cities they are. We're, you know, the city Lake Stevens is not a full-service city. Uh, we don't have a lot of components. Maybe in the future we will, but we don't have a lot of components that other cities have. So uh, my intent was to put it on the table. I know that we're growing. We've got an annexation coming. I think we're getting to that point where we need to definitely talk about a full-time mayor. But, um, I'm not prepared at this point to make that jump. I would like to get kind of the background information of what other cities have done. And, uh, kind of see where we sit in relation to, uh, our peers.
Oh, I can't tell you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Um, I can tell you that, uh, the city of Taquilla is about, uh, twenty thousand, uh, twenty-one thousand population. They have a full-time mayor. Um, the city of Mount Vernon is, uh, ha- also has a full-time mayor and their population's at around thirty-five thousand. We've got city of Marysville full-time, city of Lynnwood full-time. And the city of Anacortes is full-time and they only have a population of seventeen thousand. And these are just looking at our normal comparable cities that we use in market surveys. Um, and I, all the rest of our comparables are part-time. So Arlington, Burian, Kenmore, uh, Mill Creek, Monroe. Yep, so, um, it kind of varies. I mean, as you can tell, from going from Anacortes all the way, um, up to a city like Sea-Tac has almost thirty thousand. They have part-time. Burian is fifty-two thousand and they have a part-time.
So my question is, and I don't, I don't know where I got this, but it's been in the back of my mind that that this is not a councilmatic decision. It's a put it on the ballot decision during a mayor's election. I've always thought that that's the way it was, that, that's the way we would have to do this. Am I wrong about that, Greg?
I don't believe so. Uh, I think you are wrong.
I'm wrong?
I believe so. I, I, I think the, the, the ci- I think the city can decide whether it wants a, a mayor who is going to, uh, uh, be expected to perform full, full-time duties, part-time duties. Uh, it's, it's the salary for that position would be set on what the expectation, uh, is and that somebody then running for office uh, would know that it's a part-time or full-time depending upon your, your, your choice and, uh, the salary they're making with the expectations are. But the, uh, the election processes determine, uh, who the mayor is and not how many hours, uh, they put into that position. I believe that to be the case. I would check to verify that, but I believe that.
Right, so you s- so you said the city determines that. You meant city council?
Yes, the city council, yes, ultimately, yes.
I, I know. Go ahead, Steve. Good, Sean. Um, so a question for, um, Gene. Um, so I, a tremendous amount of respect for the work that John Spencer put in, then the path that he put our city on. Um, he also was putting in more than full-time work, um, for that. Um, Gene, can you help? Um, and I rather than putting you on the spot, just what kind of things, what kind of return on investment for the time in attending those meetings and making those connections that we've been able to realize as a city because of the full-time efforts of Mayor Spencer and now, uh, Mayor Gailey? Could you just highlight a few, a few things maybe that stand out to you?
Certainly. I mean, if you look at the economic growth the city's experienced with, uh, the sales tax increase. Um, both Mayor Spencer, former Mayor Spencer and Mayor Gailey have been behind, uh, helping to promote the city on a daily basis, on the phone, talking with, um, not only developers, but people of interest in coming to the city of Lake Stevens. And so we've seen that in our sales tax increases. Uh, the, the hours that Mayor Spencer worked were probably forty to fifty hours a week and, uh, Mayor Gailey is working those same hours. It's, it's an incredible amount of time that it takes to put into a community that's growing like ours has grown. Uh, as the projects come out of the ground, they're at the, the ribbon cuttings, they're at City Hall every day supporting the staff, uh, meeting with concerned citizens because, uh, we operate on such a skeleton crew at the city. If we do, and I think we brought this to the council a number of years ago, just a comparison of the staff that we have compared to other cities our size, I want to say we're running around, um, sixty percent or seventy percent of what most cities have of our size. And, and we could pull that together um, for council, but certainly the mayor role helps fill that void without, uh, the full-time hours being put in by the city, uh, mayor. I don't believe you'd see a lot of what we've seen.
I will say, I think, uh, you've been doing a great job, Brett, uh, Mayor Gailey. Uh, and I know you're putting in a tremendous amount of hours. Um, I kind of liked where Steve Ewing was going with this, um, saying, I think you should be compensated more for your time that you're doing. But as far as a full-time mayor, I think that is something that, um, I would like to see. Um, maybe as the next election cycle goes, um, look at something like that. Uh, because we're gonna have four new council members or possibly all the same council members all working here. And I think it would be better to see what they want to have moving forward as far as election, but I think your time is valuable. And I think you've been doing is a great service to the community, so I'd like to see some type of hybrid there. But as far as a full-time mayor, I just don't think we're quite ready for that yet. I think Gary alluded to that a little bit, and if I'm mis- paraphrasing what you said, Gary, uh, I apologize for that. And I talked to council member Jorstad today. She reached out to me and I think she is along the same lines of what I'm seeing here and what's gonna, I'm trying to speak for her, but she felt it more important to go through the election cycle. But she did understand you're putting a lot of hours in and I think the compensation that you're getting right now for the work that you're doing now is disappropriate. So I'd like to see maybe a hybrid in there somewhere. And you've done a great job and I think you're doing great things for the city and I can't even imagine how many hours you're putting in above and beyond what you're getting, so.
I have to agree with that. I, I believe, um, your current salary is below what it should be and I would have a hard time going with full-time at this point. But I can see that hybrid. I like that word. That's a good word. Uh, for what would, might help you, uh, but not overwhelm us financially.
I, I, I don't think it's I'm, I want to look at this a little different than what the conversation really is. It's, it's not about what our previous mayor did. It's, it's not about all the great work that Mayor Gailey's doing. It's, it's about the city. And I think what's missing from this conversation is, is the process of the decision points. Um, I, I, I think that it's too too light of a conversation really to just look at, well, this city has this many people and they have a full-time mayor. Um, every city's different and what we really need to understand is what are those trigger points in this city that warrant the need for a full-time mayor? And, you know, maybe we're already there, but we still need to do our due diligence and document what those things are. And then we have a very easy process to move forward and say, yes, we're doing this. I, I, I don't think it's necessarily about the, the number of people that reside in the city or si- as simple as a straight comparison of, of the market cities. I, I think this is a little different than maybe a market analysis for salaries. That being said, I agree with everything that's already been said about the compensation uh, for Mayor Gailey. He does amazing work. Um, I spoke to that in my comments earlier. It's definitely something that needs to be addressed. And there's a process for that. Ultimately, I say, I, what we need is the right process to move this forward if this is the right way to go.
Oh, I agree with what Sean's saying, uh, somewhat. I think I would want to add to what Sean's saying. And that is that, um, I believe that a city is, is actually run by a team. And I think that Brett and Gene are running as a team. And if you look at, I think the compensation needs to be looked at a little differently than just what a full-time mayor making and what is a part-time mayor making, that kind of thing with the comparables. I would like, I would like to see how is that team, that executive team, those two people in each of those cities, how does that compare? And so you've got a city administrator in Marysville that's making a heck of a lot of money, along with a mayor that's making a heck of a lot of money. And here we've got our city administrator making a certain amount of money and our mayor not making very much money. And you compare all that with population and intricacies of the city, et cetera. If we can get that kind of a comparison going, it might be a little easier for us to understand what we need in the city. And that's what it really is all about. And what do we need? And, you know, I, I'm all for a full-time mayor. I have for, for a long time. However, I think it has to be, uh, brought on cautiously and, uh, incorrectly. We're almost the fourth largest city in the county. By most of the discussions, I admit, that doesn't really mean anything. I mean, there's some very large cities that have part-time mayors. Uh, Lynnwood, for instance, is only, is a full-time mayor, but she doesn't even sit on a council. She, she sits in the audience for council meetings. And, uh, which I think is ridiculous, but that's what happens. So every city is, is slightly different in, in that. And watching all of those cities and how they operate is sometimes astounding and sometimes disheartening. But, so I, I really think we need to look at the, the, the teamwork and the, the team of and that. And the salaries really, I don't want to compare salaries and we have to, okay, the mayor can only make this much because the city administrator is making this much. That's not the point. Point is, is how do we, how are we running the city and how would, would it be best to have? Is it best to have a full-time mayor because that's what it takes? Or is it best to, okay, let's compensate it better because of, uh, and still be a part-time mayor uh, as, uh, most people have said right here. And, and then move forward in the next three, four years and see what, see what needs to shake out then. Kind of where I'm coming from.
I think the way it's set up, um, excellent comments, Kim. Thanks for sharing and the others that have shared their thoughts. I think, uh, what we need to do is, um, authorize a salary commission to or task the salary commission with doing, uh, salary review since that's part of the process that we have to do to establish what those wages are gonna be. Um, at the same time while they're meeting, we can still have those conversations on, on your whoever all and put together some of those, um, ideas that, uh, Sean and others have brought up about, you know, the respective responsibilities and the interconnection and a relationship between the city administrator and the mayor. Um, and things like that. So I, I think really it comes down to, you know, we just approved someone a twenty-five percent pay bump. That's actually more than what the mayor makes a year. Um, and so I think just balancing out, um, compensation, if we want to go with the, a part-time than part-time of what a full-time, uh, mayor would earn. Uh, but I'm confident that none of those part-time mayors making, um, that's putting in those hours is, uh, is making twenty-six hundred a month. I mean, that's laughable.
Well, the salary commission, if we met with salary commission and we'd have to make sure or we would have to tell them exactly what we're looking for. In other words, it'd be okay, it's a part-time mayor. With a much better compensation is what we're after. The problem with the salary commission is whatever they come out with is law. The council has no authority to change it. Uh, the mayor has no authority to change it. Whatever they come up with is the way it is. Uh, Marcus and I have had this conversation several times over the years where, you know, they, they raised the council's pay and I was like, why are we doing that? You know, it's like, we, we don't really need to have our pay uh, compensated more for what we're doing. They did it anyway and there's nothing we could say about it. So they saw something we didn't. And, and I think they based most of it on comparables, which we're, what I'm saying, we need to stay away from the comparables. I don't think that that's an accurate depiction of what's happening. And so I, I don't know how to go about doing that with a salary commission. And the other thing is the salary commission is the only one that can set the salary. So we're we're between a rock and a hard spot there in my conversation.
So I would say let's put maybe some council members together and try to bring a recommendation forward. So the rest of the council could then take a look at it, put the parameters. Sean, I think you were right on great points. Um, and put some triggers in place and say, this is what we think he's, you know, the mayor's doing right now and have them come with salary based off of that. And help guide, um, where we want this position to go, whether it's next year, the year after, whatever it is. But I think it's, it's something and, uh, uh, and I, I, Steve totally agree with you, but I would like to see three of us get together and put something together for the rest of the council to move forward on maybe in the, you know, next couple of months.
That's a great suggestion, Marcus, and I'd, I'd love to be a part of that conversation, um, if that's something that, uh, you know, the, the direction we go.
I would agree with Marcus on that direction. I think that's a prudent, uh, short-term and a long-term approach.
I would also agree with that. I just, if we take into account everybody's comments, I think that that's a great way to go and, uh, I just want to caution us, the, the salary commission is their own entity and we really can't, we're, we're not even allowed to talk to them. So we gotta be careful about that kind of stuff. We can only
But we're not, we're not talking about going to the salary commission at this point per council.
I, I understand, I understand that. I'm just putting in that caution to make sure we have that in the back of our minds.
Okay. Fair enough.
Why don't we try to get a committee put together in the next month, two months? I think Angie Jorstad might want to weigh in on that too. And if we can do that, then we can get a put together and start moving forward with this.
Greg, are we missing anything on that? Are we okay to proceed, um, in that direction?
That, that, that's fine. That, that's developing your what's the context of the mayor and his duties in regard to your overall organization, what's the expectation? Uh, really all that's material that the salary commission should consider in, in setting the salary. Again, they set the salary supposedly based on the position, not the person who occupies the, the, the position. And, and you may have a mayor who does far more than what the expectation is and may do far less, but, uh, the council putting some more structure around that as to what the expectations are for the position. Uh, it, the salary should be, uh, should be set looking, looking at that specifically. So I think this is a really good idea, uh, for you, for you to look at. And see where your mayor over the last, their duties over the last, uh, you know, four or five years, uh, uh, how that relates to really to the management and structure of the city and how you want to see it. And all those would be good recommendations.
I'd be happy to step forward and serve on that committee if anybody chose, so.
Great. Well, maybe what we'll do is we'll, everyone who's interested in being on that submit your names out and then somehow we'll come up with a formula of three people or if we want to have four people, the council members to do it, whatever the number is, I think, oh, we're meeting the axis three, but if there's greater debate on it, then we can look at it. So I'd like to serve on it. I, I definitely uh, the position is definitely a different position than it was ten years ago, so.
I'd like to reiterate it. Brett is doing a great job. There's no, this isn't about the person. This is about where we need to go forward with this, with the city. Uh, John Spencer did a great job. Brett's taking that mantle and, and run with it. I, I appreciate everything he does. I think he is working way too many hours on it, but you know, that's, he's got a personal drive that I admire. And, uh, so what, wherever this comes out, I think we're gonna be better for it.
I second Kim's comments. I second Kim's comments. Great job, Brett.
Hey, thanks, everybody. I appreciate uh good conversation, good stuff. Um, let's move on and so that, so that's going to be a tabled action item then, since there's no action taken on it. Um, so we'll table that. All right, let's move on to uh code enforcement abatement with Russ and Greg.
That would be discussion items moving forward.
Okay, thank you, council. Um, a couple of council members have. Talked to me about our code enforcement process and just wanted a little bit more information. Sometimes code enforcement. Seems like it it takes um a really long time and you don't see actions and and a lot of that is true. Um, but we do have a a process that's considered a civil process that we follow. That um as our code lays it out, we do initial outreach. After, after we receive complaints, a lot of those complaints come through um an internet portal. Sometimes they're anonymous, sometimes they're not. They can range from violations of building and zoning code. To parked cars on the street, to general garbage and nuisance. So I included for your information, um, a flow chart that shows how our code enforcement process typically works. In a lot of cases, it's just our um code inspector who's also. Halftime code inspector, halftime building inspector, does the outreach to the the individual and says, hey, you need to pick up the garbage. Hey, do you know the building permit for that? Oh, no, sorry. And and they take care of it. There's the next group of people that may not be so responsive to that first outreach. So then we send them. A request for voluntary correction. And when we do that, that is a contract that obligates that person to satisfy. Whatever the code complaint is, and then it doesn't lead to an escalation on the city's part. So then there's another group that ignores this request for voluntary compliance and that relates. Um, that results in a notice of violation and that's a legal document. It's a court document, if you will, where we. Essentially tell them, we have found you have done. X, Y, Z, we give them the code citations, we let them know what the penalties are, what the remedies are. And that at this point, we're serious and that they need to correct the violation. At this case, most people will correct. We only issue a handful of these notice of violations a year. And I will say sometimes uh some violations, if they're particularly egregious, we'll skip the other two steps. And we'll go straight to a notice of violation, but that's not a a common thing. And then. If the violation notice is still ignored, then we go to a penalty phase if the corrections don't happen. And the the penalties as our code is written are five hundred dollars per day. But the way our code is written means that we would have to notify them every day of that that violation. And then at a certain point, if they don't correct, don't pay, we turn these penalties over to a collection agency. Who then goes after these individuals and then that's how the city recoups, you know, it's it's output. There's been a question about, well, can the city go in and do the work? In some cases, yes, the city can do the work. If we notify them ahead of time or we go through, get an a judgment from the court. That says, yeah, you can go in and abate this and then we can try to collect those fees. But there are other times for minor violations that that's probably not going to be inappropriate type action. So as we work through this, I wanted Greg to sort of give you um beyond. The process that I've just explained, what are some of the do's and don'ts and then some recommendations on how we can improve our code? And maybe look at a few additional tools. And then um on the call tonight, I also have. Tyler Farmer, who has acted in the past as our primary code enforcement inspector before he moved up into the plans examiner position. And I also have Ryan Muma on who is our building official, as you know, and it's. His team that directly is responsible for um the code enforcement along with um coordination. With the planning division, public works and um police, depending on the the type of violation that comes forward. So at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Greg if you want to walk through your recommendations. And then if you have any questions for the other staff members or if they want to jump in and add anything, um, that's how I'd like to proceed.
Okay. Your uh. Code enforcement is is regulated in your code in chapter seventeen, twenty. And it gives a number of tools for you to deal with uh in terms of. Handling a nuisance type property for whatever the reason might be. And uh those tools vary from issuing a uh, an order to cease and desist. Uh, giving out as uh, Rusty described, a notice of uh of violation. Uh, in which you prescribe penalties, uh when the penalties will start, if the problem isn't uh isn't completed. And uh how those penalties might uh might add up. Your code doesn't dictate in terms of process, in terms of. How many warnings do you get to somebody before you issue a a notice of violation? That's really a matter of discretion and policy and may uh in some, in some cases. Depend upon how serious the nuisance uh problem is and how rapidly it needs to be uh taken care of. You you basically have all the tools in your code that the uh. That the legislature has allowed you to provide for. Uh, however, I I did recommend a few things that might make the process. Uh, a little cleaner and provide you with a more effective tool, particularly with respect to your notice of violations. Uh, I've recommended that your uh your code be amended to actually lower the penalty. From five hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars per day. That helps ensure that it's a true civil penalty. If it's determined, your penalties are determined to be criminal penalties, effectively criminal, even though you call them civil. Then the city can be responsible for um paying the cost of an attorney. Uh, for the person that, just like, just like in uh a criminal case in uh. In in district court or municipal court, you want to try to uh avoid that. Uh, also lowering the penalty to fifty per day. But making uh removing the provision in your code that requires a separate notice of violation. To be issued for each day that you want the penalty to be effective should be removed. That way you can issue one notice of violation at the beginning. Uh, letting the person know that on this date, if it's not taken care of. Here's going to be your penalties to date, but then the content penalties are going to continue to grow at this two hundred and fifty dollar. Day a rate, which is a good incentive to the person to get the uh, get the uh problem cleaned up. And avoids a lot of administrative problem in terms of issuing additional notices of of uh. Violation. Um, I've also recommended that we've, we had some provisions uh that would take care of what we call. You know, zombie properties. These are property where there appears to be no one apparently responsible. There may be no one living there. We can't find anyone who's uh uh that we can contact to even. A survey, uh, a a notice of violation and the legislature has given us some tools to deal with those properties that. Currently are not addressed in your code. And so I've uh recommended that we uh. Uh, that we add that. I've also recommended to the uh, the staff that where they have a uh. A problem property and the uh and the person on the premises is non-responsive. If there's any type of mortgage or deed of trust on the property that the city also involve the 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 lender. Uh, because every, every lender agreement I've ever seen prohibits the uh. Uh, the uh owner of the property from allowing liens to be attached to the property. Or to violate the state or local laws. So that can also be another uh uh effective tool in the in the process. Um, the concept of uh of due process that is giving people notice, an opportunity to contest. Uh, all those, the those types of procedures are inherent in the uh. In the abatement uh process of the uh, the provision in your code. That allows for the city to go on the property. And abate the nuisance itself without the permission of the uh of the property owner is not currently compliant to with. Uh, with state law and there also needs to be some adjustments made to that uh. Code provision to provide for the required uh notices. So there's several things in your code that that need some help. It's it's basic structure, though, is is fine. Just a few things to. To help clean it up and smooth out to your administrator processes.
So I think unless you have questions.
Ready for questions?
Yes.
Okay, so looking at your spreadsheet, you're not your spreadsheet, I'm sorry, your uh. Your uh. The chart, how long does it take? Between the time that a violation is received and let's say that there is no compliance, no compliance and third non-compliance. How much time is between? The violation received and a third contact?
I I think it ranges, but it's probably going to take at least um six to eight weeks until we get to. That that penalty phase or the the notice of violation. So usually we're going to give somebody. A letter and say, hey, please get ahold of us within seven days so we can talk about this. Uh, the next time if we do a voluntary correction, we might say, hey, can you do this within fourteen days? And then if they don't do that, obviously, then another round of letters sort of starts. So it's going to be at least six to eight weeks before we get to a. I notice a violation phase.
And so in our process that we have, is there a ticker that keeps track of this or is it just? I'll get to that when I can or how are we doing that in the process?
It's. Probably more get to it when I can. Unfortunately, it becomes one of the lower priorities. As you know, with the the volume of building inspections that we've had and those tend to take priority. So they're probably devoting one day a week to. To code enforcement. And I would let um Ryan or Tyler speak to that with their more direct experience if you want to add anything to that.
Tyler, if you want to jump in on that, um, since he's been working on a day-to-day basis, I will say that that's probably accurate what Russ is saying. Uh, one day a week and obviously our building inspections do take priority over that. Um, in a sense, it's kind of both as far as a tickler and when you can get to it. We do have a time set of when we. Are to do our follow-up inspection or to check if the property is in compliance. But with the uh amount of inspections that we have. It's difficult to forego the daily inspection list in order to make that code enforcement follow-up. So then it becomes a matter of when I can get to it. Uh, we do have that showing up on our workspace, though. Is that it's it's due for that follow-up. Uh, Tyler, is that, is that accurate, Tyler?
Uh, yes, it is. Everybody hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, we uh, we try to integrate uh site visits uh throughout the day as we conduct our building inspections. Uh, you know, and then, you know, it does become problematic finding time to follow up on all these letters and type these letters, you know, because building inspections have taken priority.
So what's the timeline from the time you receive a complaint about a code enforcement issue and the time that you? Um, reach back out to address that? What's the expectation?
Well, initially, uh, after we receive a complaint, I'd like to get a confirmation letter out to the complainant immediately. Uh, disinforming them that we have received their complaint and giving them their their C O D numbers so they can follow up if necessary. Uh, but then we like to conduct site visits, you know, within at least twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Uh, it also depends on the severity of the complaint as well. You know, if it's life safety or environmentally safe, uh unsafe or anything of that nature, then we try to jump on it uh sooner, the much sooner better than later.
If I may. Again, again, the time. How many uh contacts the city staff has uh with a uh. With a property owner or occupant or property uh. Um, requesting voluntary compliance before some uh action uh is is taken that. They start, start the imposition of penalties. Is a matter of policy and discretion. It's again, it's not mandated by statute and it's not mandated by by your code. You could issue a a notice of violation, for example. Uh, fairly quickly after you've given a request to contact the city and to take care of it. Uh, and if you're not getting compliance, uh, you you could issue that notice sooner if if you wanted. Different cities have, in my experience, have have different takes. Uh, there's obviously the citizen who's getting these notices. Who gets upset that there's, that their city is uh pressuring them to do something with their property or threatening of. Uh, you know, very severe and and high fines and part of the code enforcement process is to be. Somewhat sens- sensitive uh to those concerns, but on the same hand. To have a a an effective uh process. So there's some compromise involved in that. And uh. How you want to handle that uh. Um, is is though it comes down really to a matter of policy.
Yeah, I would agree with that, that uh there has been instances to where just depending on the situation or if the repeat offenders. Uh, that we have moved straight to a notice of violation. Uh, but the issue I have had with the notice of violation is the five hundred dollars a day. Per violation, uh, because that, you know, if they have two or three violations, that could easily be, you know, fifteen hundred dollars a day that they're being fined. And so a lot of the people, they just kind of look at you like, you just, they're in disbelief and they just, they can't get ahead of that. So they just kind of blow it off and let it go. Because it just gets so egregious so quickly.
Yeah. The, which, and and the the way that it's normally handled in those notices of violation is that there aren't penalties immediately imposed. With the issuance of the notice of violation. It gives the person a time to. Um, take care of the problem before the penalties become effective. And it's only in the event that they are non-compliant after getting the notice and given a reasonable period of time to. Uh, to take care of the problem that the uh, that the penalties would be imposed. But just the thought of seeing that, oh gee, if I don't get this done in three weeks or whatever, I'm going to have accumulated penalties. Several thousand dollars of, yeah, that's, that's, that is intimidating. But but there's also leverage to get the uh, the problem cleaned up.
Yeah, we had a real world example of that last year, so.
Sure, yeah.
And it went very, very public, but.
Yes.
Uh, Gary, you had something you wanted to say and then I have something I want to say.
Yeah, just got a couple of comments and Greg, I do appreciate you uh. With your recommendations, I think we need to implement all of your recommendations. The biggest heartburn, I think, in this whole thing, though, is. Um, I think we average, what, a hundred and seventy-five complaints a year. I would guess the vast majority of those folks are. Folks that do end up complying in a relatively short period of time. It's it's the outlier, that's not a good term. It's the exception to the rule that is the huge neighborhood problem that. You know, essentially thumbs their nose at the process. And so how do you condense this uh timeframe from the violation? Received or the complaint received to. You know, an end result, how do you compress that? And um. That is where I think we should focus on because in addition to Greg's uh. Comments as to uh amending our our ordinance. But from the neighbor's standpoint, it's the length of time that you get from complaint to resolution. That just drives people absolutely crazy when it goes on for weeks and weeks and weeks and it almost becomes. And I appreciate your time, gentlemen, uh, Ryan and Tyler, but. but it kind of becomes that squeaky wheel deal. You know, the, the, the person that is affected by this has to kind of constantly stay on this. And I don't, I don't know as though that's truly fair to a citizen. Everybody recognizes that there's a neighborhood problem in a particular situation. It shouldn't take a greasy or a squeaky wheel type situation to resolve that. So my question to, I guess it would be to Greg and Russ and maybe Tyler is to how do we compress this timeframe so that these things don't go on for six, eight, 10, 12, 18 months and get them addressed? It's, you know, we are a growing city. We still have my opinions from remnants of rural lifestyle. And I don't know as though that's conducive to a city that would like to see a, a little more, for lack of a better term, sophisticated type environment, so.
Well, to, to start with an answer.
How do we compress that time?
To start answering your question, I had a pretty lengthy conversation with Ryan last week about how do we allocate our time more effectively to make sure that we are staying on top of our code enforcement weekly? So that's something I know that Ryan's working on with, with his staff to ensure that we are being more timely, but I think it's, as I think Greg said, code enforcement is one of these things that you have to balance the sensitivity of private property rights versus neighbors. And a lot of the times, it's just a difference in, in lifestyles themselves. What one person considers garbage, the neighbor finds terribly offensive when say the next five people could care less. So it's really, that's, that's part of the nuance of code enforcement. What's real, what isn't real? And these repeat violators, as we call them, usually we are pretty quick with those where we've said, okay, burn me once, burn me twice, you know, that kind of a deal. We are going to go to a notice of violation. If it's an environmental quality issue, if somebody's, you know, has done fill in a wetland or something like that, they get a notice of violation immediately, a red tag, their job is shut down until they rectify it. But it's the, the smaller nuisance ones, those are the ones that get, can get difficult. But within our each step, I think if we want to tighten up our process, we can do that to say, the first response is the responsible party must respond to the city. You know, we could go as short as 48 hours, probably realistically five days is probably about right. The second response, we could tighten up to, you know, I don't want to try and throw out numbers, but we could look at our process and from initial involvement with the responsible party to going to a violation or cleanup. I think we do have room to tighten up all of those, those timelines.
And I sincerely appreciate your comments, Russ. I know there's that balance that needs to take place of like you say, one person's garbage is another person's asset or something of that sort. But when you have garbage that is literally piled in a backyard or in a front yard or a side yard and, you know, the, the roof is rotting and so forth. And it, a, a reasonable looksee would say, this is not a good situation. Those are the things that I think really, you know, drive the neighborhood folks have to live around that. It really pushes them over the edge. And so that's, that's kind of the focus of my comments. I, again, I think everybody recognizes where we have those marginal areas. There's, there's gray areas and so forth, but the, the ones that truly are a problem, they truly need to be addressed in a timely manner, so.
And I know the one that you and I have spoken about, that one, I think your term outlier was actually okay, exception or outlier. In that particular case, we've gone all the way to collections and they still don't care. And so you, you are going to have a contingent like that.
Well, and I guess what, you know, by jumping to that collection stage from a property owner, they've given you the thumb the whole time. They're going to give the collection agency a thumb and there's probably nothing there for the collection agency to re.
Collect on.
No, I, you know, what's the incentive for the collection agency? It's not much. They can send a couple of letters and probably make a couple of nasty phone calls if they have a phone, but the end result doesn't get you there.
Right. And this is.
There is a.
Greg is discussing to go to this, uh, legal due process where the city then, if, if that's the desire of the city to abate that, we just need to be able to build that into our code and either, uh, agree that you may or may not get financially, you may not recoup that, that time and investment if we're cleaning up people's properties after we give them notice.
Right.
What about?
That would be an exception, so I don't, I can't imagine that.
There is a, there is a statutory process going to superior court to obtain what's called a warrant of abatement. It's where the court will issue an order requiring that the property be cleaned up or allowing the city to go in and do the cleanup and to put a lien on the property for the, the cost of recovery in order to go into court to obtain the warrant of abatement. We need a good record of what the, what the problem is. And quite frankly, it needs to be a fairly serious one to, to get the attention of the court and to have them issue this warrant abatement. But, but there is a process independent of the, if levying fines and having liens put on the property for the collection isn't getting it done. And there is a serious problem, there is this other avenue that in some cases that the, this, the city can pursue. I've also encouraged in, in some cases, you look at obtaining what's called a voluntary agreement with the property owner. Sometimes there are cases where the person just doesn't have the resources to be able to take care of the problem themselves. Okay. And, and sometimes in those cases, having an agreement with the property owner, which allows the city to go in and take, take care of the problem. The costs are put as a, a lien on the, on, on the property. And we have agreement in, in the, when those costs would be paid or in the alternative, we have a time period for the person to take care of the problem. And if not, they agree that the city can go into court and the court, and the court will have the court issue the warrant of abatements. That's all in, in agreement. And that's another process that can be used. Particularly, as I say, particularly in those cases, maybe you have elderly people or an elderly person. You, you have the hoarder who's been, you know, hoarding stuff and putting stuff on their property for a long period of time. And it's really a, a mess to, to clean up. That's another tool that, that could be used.
Does that need to be incorporated within an ordinance or those separate?
Actually, you have provisions in your code right now that allow for a voluntary compliance agreement. So we don't, that's already there, actually.
What about the superior court action?
We, uh, we can go to court. We don't have to amend your code, code to seek. That's a statutory process.
Those are avenues that can be.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Okay, so it's my turn. Two things, something Greg just said would kind of rang a bell with me, and that is, there are people out there that have problems that are not necessarily meeting our criteria. In other words, going in and okay, they've got a problem on their property, but the problem is because they cannot take care of it. Like an older, older person, you know, 81-year-old lady living alone type thing and that. Or maybe there's a disabled veteran that is having difficulties in this particular case. So the property in question that Gary and I know about, let's just pretend like that is a disabled veteran that has a problem. I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying let's use this as an example. If we could in the process find that out, that the reason that they're having difficulties is because they fall into some category of, I, I cannot personally take care of this. Could we then get their agreement to go to somebody like the senior center to get help or the veterans commission to get help? Or something like that where we could get a work party that gets permission to go on to their property and help them?
Absolutely. Yes.
So I've never heard of us doing this. I'm just thinking, is there, do, should we put this in our process somehow? Just a little question of, okay, or there's an inkling that maybe Ryan or Tyler gets when they're there that there's a problem that it can't be taken care of because there's a situation. Then we go to the right organization in the city to get it taken care of with permission to enter their property. We just make an agreement with them somehow to make that happen. I know there's organizations, I think that, I think that the, I can speak for the veterans organizations and we would definitely take care of a veteran. The seniors, I'm not so sure about, but the, the senior center knows who to reach out to, to get help on things like that. So I, I would suggest that we push that into our process somehow.
Well, you know, it's, it's, as, as mentioned, it's a bit of a time-consuming process and having that personal contact somewhere with the, especially if there is somebody on the premises living to try to talk to them, to try to find out the reason why do they just disagree that they, they think it's not a problem? If they are in a situation where, look, I just, I don't have a truck. I don't know how to get rid of this stuff. Or I'm, you know, I don't have the physical capacity or whatever the reason is and to find out. And then to try to fashion some sort of, uh, a means for them to get help to do that or in, in terms of a voluntary agreement to permission to go on the property to get it done. That's, that's certainly possible. Again, it's, it's, but it is more time and it's, we have to, and, and code enforcement had to figure out a way to build that into their process. It certainly is possible.
I don't think it's as difficult as that, Greg. I think that, if, I think that if Ryan and Tyler and, and Russ and the city staff understand that there's organizations out there ready to lend a hand at those types of situations, then all they have to do is they find out based on the first consult with the person, they find out that there's an issue like that. They pick up the phone, call one person and it gets taken care of.
Well, you could develop.
It unloads the staff at that point and we just have the organization to make it happen. And I'm, I'm basically speaking from a veteran's point of view at this point, but I'm thinking that there's others out there that we could unload that too.
And, and that's something that we discussed. I've talked about that recently with Russ and, and with Tyler. And it's been my experience in the past that code enforcement officers have been able to build a, a set of resources, whether that's community groups or church groups or veterans groups that you've mentioned. Uh, it does take the time to put them together and to figure out who's willing to do that, but it has been effective. And it isn't necessarily something the city is really involved in, in creating an agreement with the property owner. It's just making that connection between the group that's willing to help and the person that's willing to accept it. I think a, a lot of the cases that we are able to resolve, there are people that would be receptive to that. And then there's still other people that think this is my property, I'm going to do what I want. And of course we'll develop other, other ways to do that. But, um, you know, without, I, I don't want this to come off as that, that I'm whining and, and, but it's a matter of the resources that we have and the amount of inspections that we have. It's still difficult to find the time to, to really keep back and go hitting on these people for that. And speaking with Russ, he, he definitely gave me some great ideas on how we can spread the load a little bit, maybe be more effective with our time. And I think that that's going to help us with our results there. But when we're looking at 40, 50, 60 some odd inspections a day between the two inspectors, that pushes the limit of, of an effective inspection they can do. And so it's balancing those priorities of, you know, something that's health and safety on one hand and something that's health and safety on the other. So I, I think there's resources out there, but they all take a little bit of time and it's just finding that balance for us that we can get the results that we need to and, and with the correct tools.
And also in, uh, in my recent experience, I can only really honestly think of one case that I, that I was, was considering or pushing towards bringing in an outside working party to help remedy the situation because the property owner was elderly and she was unable to take care of it herself. Uh, but typically everyone, everyone else is, you know, they're, they're in their violation and they understand it. And they, and they have the means to fix it typically.
Okay. Uh, the other question I had was in, in our process, if we have a code violation and it's within, it's in the inside of an HOA, is that our, is that our responsibility or the HOA's responsibility?
Depends on the violation.
Yeah, if, if, if it's in violation of our city regulations or is a nuisance, a public nuisance problem, it's, it's a city problem. It may well also be an HOA issue depending on what, 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 what the problem is. And if, if it's just something that's not a violation of our code, but a violation of the HOA regulation, then it's strictly the HOA's issue, not ours.
If it is ours due to our codes and it also is against the HOA, can we use the HOA to help?
Well, sure, we can certainly discuss coordinating, coordinating dealing with the issue. Yeah, what can you do? What can we do? Certainly.
A lot of the times the HOA comes to us, asking for, asking for help.
I wasn't looking for that, I wasn't looking for that answer, Tyler, thanks.
No, it, it's pretty true though.
Yeah, I don't doubt it.
Yeah, we just had a call from one, as a matter of fact, yesterday, someone that's on the, the HOA and, and looking for, I guess, assistance in solving violation of their homeowner's agreement that, that really isn't a violation of city code. So I'm not sure what we can do on that one, but we'll look and see what kind of assistance we can get.
Hey, Steve, go ahead. I was going to try to cut discussion for.
Yeah, let's cut off. We still got a ways to go and it's almost nine o'clock.
Yeah. Okay, so Russ, do you have enough guidance at this point?
I do. Sorry, I was plugging in my machine. I definitely hear councils' concerns. It's our concerns as well. And we'll keep working for efficiencies and we'll report back with some of the ideas we come up with. And then these code recommendations that Greg has put forward.
Yeah, I'll put together a draft ordinance and that'll come back to you.
Great, perfect. Let's move on to discussion item D, Chapel Hill Civic Center. Russ, you're up.
Okay, I can wrap this up in probably a minute. So we had met with the library, Snow Isle and the sewer district and talked about the scoring of the proposals that we received. We have received four proposals and we are going to move to interview all of those groups. They all scored and ranked fairly closely. Each group had some different qualities that we really liked and some that we still had questions on. So we are moving forward on July 17th to do those interviews. I've been working the last couple of days to coordinate everybody's schedules, the consultants and the reviewers on that. And we should be able to bring council back a recommendation at your August, your special August 11th meeting for a consultant. And Mayor, if you want to add any comments to the process, feel free.
No, I think you wrapped it up pretty good. It's a, it's a good process so far. And I'm anxious to see what the interviews look like and who comes out on top. See what, see what they, they propose. Great, let's move on to discussion item E, 18th Festival Street, North Cove Park, Phase Two. That's Gene.
Thanks Mayor. I will go over the sheets that Kathy had emailed out to council, I think yesterday afternoon. This is a project that you might recall was funded just the design portion through our grant we received from the state, not only for North Cove Phase Two, but it did include the design of the festival street. Uh, um, not only for North Cove Phase Two, but it did include the designer Festival Street. Uh, I've taken on this project. Uh, just because we didn't have bandwidth with existing public work staff and all the other projects we had on. So I I'm volunteered to take over uh. As project manager because our hope was to get this designed by the end of the month. So if there were stimulus money. That came out of the federal government for projects, we have a project ready shovel ready, if you will, project here that we can move forward on. Uh, the the concept between or for eighteen street is of a festival street. Uh, we had talked about this in the past. Uh, the the. Idea or the design we have here today is uh, basically the existing concrete concourse. That wraps around the mill that would continue at about the same grade out across the new proposed eighteenth street. Uh, there would be an extension of the plaza area in the northern section. Um, and you can see that we provided an area that. We will be able to insert our holiday tree during the winter months into our tree lighting. That's what uh, there's a little circular. I don't know if you guys can see that on your drawing. Uh, but that's what that's for. So we'd be able to have our holiday lighting out there. Uh, it's a big enough area that we could put a. Uh, winter ice skating rink in. There's companies out there that. Uh, rent ice skating rinks, they come and set them up and then we get the house out there for the um, fall in winter. The ballards are removable that um. Line the edge of eighteenth street so we could pull those out for big parcels or other type of events, maybe through the tree. Pull those out. We plan on extending the existing. It's that we have out front of the mill, you knows the new wooden. Street site or sites that we have, those were uh. Line both sides of the festival street. They are just for light, roaming eighteen footer versus the big balls that you have out in front of the mill. So have a little bit different look, but uh, comes from those poles. You would have what I I call like a light curtain. This is shown on sheet seven of eighteen. It's kind of a diamond pattern, if you will, going over the top of the festival street. Those are holiday lights that you see in a lot of uh. Plazas. It would be a light curtain above the road, high enough where vehicles wouldn't hit them, but it would give a. Really nice ambiance to the street for uh, the events we have planned out there. One of the main features that I want to draw your your attention to um, before we move to sheet eighteen of eighteen. Is right at the entrance of Main and the Festival Street. There is a solid black line that crosses the road. That's what we're calling the entry sign. Uh, the goal behind the Festival Street is to have a memorable experience as you come down Main Street. As you arrive at the Festival Street, you know you're there, uh, a nice entryway similar to what you have at Fremont Street in Las Vegas. It's a memorable experience. When you get there, we tried to come up with something uh, that that's similar. Uh, out before that, you'll see two smaller hash marks. Those are what we are calling a gate. And the concept again is to have something that people remember. These gates. Uh, are reminiscent of the gates, the crossarms, if you will, that you have over a railroad crossing. And so as you turn to sheet eighteen. Of eighteen, you'll see both of these features. The uh, gateway signage, that is a a timber construction. So you have four eight by eight posts going up on each side with steel strapping. The actual arch over the the street itself to suspend the street name. That is supposed to resemble a railroad track. And you know, we've put the railroad track through the mill. This pays tribute to the past when the railroad uh, track ran down Main Street in Lake Stevens. So we brought that design element in. Uh, you see the gate detail. And again, um, we're trying to go over the detail that was uh. Something that people would remember when they're in downtown, but yet useful. Because we're going to be closing the street on a fairly routine basis. We wanted to get away from having to drag barricades out there or um. Water barricades that you have to move the forklift, that type of thing. Uh, these gates be uh, pinned in position in the open position. We'd remove the pins, drop them down to the closed position. And they'd be set for the uh, closure of the road. So that's kind of what we have in in mind there. Uh, before I I I leave this discussion to the naming. There is landscape on both sides of eighteenth street planned. Uh, it's a real nice compromise. We'll have a lot of color, but yet it'll be fairly low maintenance. And that was the the idea behind this road is that it would be low maintenance, easy to transform and everything was portable. Uh, we also have incorporated some portable seating in the plaza area. And that would be a kind of a steel framework, if you will, with a wooden seat on that. And those would be movable. We could put them in different configurations for different events. And certainly during the tree lighting when Santa arrives, they can be configured to house that event where Santa would stand up on top of that. Along with the mayor for the introduction. So we've done a lot of thinking on this. There's a lot of lighting incorporated. Uh, I will take questions before I turn it over to Dawn to talk about. The naming of the street.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. You you've mentioned the ice skating rink. I just wanted, I just want you to talk to WICA before we go doing that. We were not allowed to do that several years ago because of WICA. Uh, the chamber tried to bring one in for an Oktoberfest and they basically said thou shalt not. So, uh, you know, and that that pretty much said no on that because of the liability.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Any other questions as you look at the plans? Does it uh, fit what you kind of had in your mind?
This is great.
That's the complete opposite of what I was hoping for Jean. I was thinking of something totally different. I'm just kidding.
Well, well, here's the cool part. Thank you. Here's here's the cool part about is uh, we were shooting for around a two million dollar project. And we had an engineering estimate of two point one. So we're we're pretty pleased. I'm really excited about it. Uh, one of the main things as I turn this over to Dawn is to name the street because again, you want something that's memorable. Uh, and it's it's important because when we announce our event, it's got to be a name that's catchy. And something that people will remember and be drawn to. So I'm going to turn it over to Dawn.
All right. Good evening again, council. Um. So like Jean was saying, we are looking at some options for naming our lovely Festival Road. And one of the first things we did was to look at some of the criteria that already exists for naming city parks. And since there isn't something for naming the streets, um, we decided to still follow um, along Val's lines. So um, the one that jumped out probably is um, in terms of the name representing a unique historical significance of the site. Or a a unique natural quality or feature of the area. So it really started um. Brainstorming some major things about the area such as the mill, the railroad spur as Jean mentioned. And um, some other things that are pertinent to the history of Lake Stevens. So I'm going to start, um, I'm going to do a quick screen share and just share um, some of the names that we uh, have for presentation. For you to uh, think about. Um, I guess I can't. It says it's host disabled participant screen sharing. Um, is there a way I can do that or because um, or I could just save them and hopefully you will write them down and we can send them out if you have questions?
Did you make her a host?
I made you a host.
Okay, I'll I'll make you a host, Dawn.
Okay, and it'll be really quick. It's just a quick uh, PDF. All right, so uh, let's see. All right, so um. We came up with several names that will reflect the some of our our very great history of Lake Stevens. Um, obviously something naming, something including the name, the mill was important to us to represent. You know, where we are now with our new mill. It's it's burned down twice. You know, the people were hoping that they'd bring the mill back. It didn't happen. So it would be nice to not only do a throwback to the name of the mill, but also um, reflecting the history of. Lake Stevens being a resort town, um, you know, was a booming resort town from the twenties to the fifties. And you know, part of our our continuing our community is to to try to bring that feeling back of. People coming and staying the summers and bringing their families here and enjoying some of our events. And and bringing that resort feel back to Lake Stevens that existed once upon a time. So. One of the names we were looking at was uh, Mill Resort Lane. Um, really being able to combine the two, not only looking back at the mill and its resort paths, but also looking forward to the future of of having this. A community that's coming together and and being able to celebrate and and recognize the diversity of our city and and be able to. You know, in be inclusive of everyone and have everyone come and enjoy our space. A second option. Is Mill Spur Way, um, another combination of using the mill and also representing the railroad. That came through the town that connected uh, Lake Stevens to Hartford. That railroad was a a huge um, boom to the area. And being able to have that spur, the railroad spur reflected in the name is also a great way to kind of tie back to that. We're looking at our railing has a similar railroad feel. So being able to keep that kind of cohesiveness with the signage. As well as with the name of the street. Uh, third option we have is outing spur. Uh, the original name of Lake Stevens before it became Lake Stevens was first called outing. And outing also its official definition is a trip taken for pleasure, especially lasting a day or less. Which is definitely the what we want. We want people to come out, enjoy your day, come back, visit us, bring your family, bring your friends. So um, it was actually combining outing spur as a possessive since it kind of blends together as one word. Calling it outing spur is a great way to blend both of those names together. Um, and be able to kind of make it kind of a fun catchy name. Um, you know, where are you at? You know, meet me on outing spur, kind of get that kind of feel of of people having a spot where they're familiar with. It's local. We know where we're going to be at. Everyone knows where that is. So um, that was kind of a fun play on those two words. Um, harking back to, you know, some of our paths that we have. And um, the fourth one is Five Acre Place. Um, another great tie back to the history of of Lake City, uh, Lake Stevens. Um, you know, originally there were um, plots bought around the lake itself. Um, that really was uh, called the Five Acre Tracks and it was a real estate project. Um, back in eighteen ninety one, it was used to first establish a small tracks for summer homes that were going to be around the lake. And so you know, what better way to kind of pull back from that, you know, resort town, uh, that feel of everyone coming out and spending summers. Then to have the name reflect something that would also reflect having our, you know. Inviting the community come in and spend time with us in the Five Acre Place. So um, those are four of the the suggestions that we have for the council. Um, we really wanted to make sure that we not only kept it um. Simple names and and easy to, you know, uh, put on signage and. For people to be able to not have a mouthful to pronounce, but also kind of make it something easy and fun. But that would also tie into, you know, where we're going as a city and how we're wanting to make North Cove Park. And the entire downtown area a place where people come and visit over and over and over again and want to come to our events. Want to come to the the holiday events, want to come and spend time at the park, be in the water. And so we want something that's going to encourage them to. Remember to come in and spend that time with us. So.
Wow, Dawn.
Any thoughts?
Wow, Dawn, what a historian. Good grief, how much work did you have to put in to find out all that? I haven't even heard of outings. That's the first time I've heard of that.
Okay, I knew about it, Kim. I just have to tell you.
No, you didn't, Mary.
Talk about it.
Yeah, okay, um, another one I'd like to put in the mix just because is Mill Run. Uh, but I really like outing spur. I I think that's why I like or Mill Spur Lane. Uh, I think those are more towards the the mill, which is what we're really accomplishing right there. But that's just me. Uh, but it's great. That's a great presentation. Thank you, Dawn.
Um, have you talked at all to the uh, Historic Society, Dawn? Have you had a chance to connect with them?
No, I have not personally had a chance to connect with them um, in terms of of getting. I did look at a lot of um, documents, historical documents from Lake Stevens and a lot of input from. Uh, Russ and Jean of of kind of. Things that they have been working with. So I have not directly talked with the society.
I have, Mary.
I, yes.
I've talked, I've, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I've talked to Sandy Fraser about it and uh, she just wanted to let us know that it was originally named Igloo Road. And uh, that was due to the old ice house that used to sit on the corner. Apparently people would, could stop there and buy ice in the lake if they were down picnicking at the lake. Uh, but that didn't really mean a lot, at least to myself and and others as we looked at the name. It was tough to relate to uh, the history of Lake Stevens and what went on there. Um, it it certainly paid tribute to one aspect, uh, which was selling of ice at that corner. Um, but other than that, Cindy really didn't have anything to say. Um, but she understood the need to probably name it. To something that was catchy and that people could get behind.
Right, they mentioned Rucker to me today. You hear me?
There's already a city, a street in Everett with that name.
Oh, never mind, okay. Never mind.
Hey, well, those are some good suggestions and we don't need to make a decision on this tonight, but this is just uh. Get the uh, brain juices flowing on uh, what we could name the Festival Street and. Uh, you gotta have a great accolades. Go out to Jean for putting together that project. It's a. It's been fun to watch him do it and uh, get good input in on it and see how it's developed. Um, some good stuff there. So keep thinking about the name for it and then um, see how it moves forward. Hey, uh, we're going to move into executive session. Do we need probably ten minutes?
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay, we're going to take ten minutes for an executive session and the matter is a personal matter or personnel matter. With possible action to follow reference police chief's contract. So we will take ten minutes, be back at ten oh, sir, nine oh. Nine seventeen. Okay, let's see if we have everybody waiting on. Couple here. Waiting on Mary. Do you see Mary anywhere? Yeah, Gary, just waiting on Mary at this point.
Do we have to reconvene the session because of time?
No, we're we're waiting for Mary to get back in. She's not on.
I'm aware that we're waiting for Mary. I just, do we have to reconvene the session?
Well, you'll have to reconvene the session, but you can uh, wait. To take, do anything until Mary arrives.
I'm aware, but we have to reconvene the session.
Yes, yeah. Back in session, yes, the mayor should.
Yes, we are back in session. Yes, we are back in session and we're waiting for Mary. Would you like to move on with that or Marcus?
I would like to move on with that at this point.
Okay. Do we have a motion uh coming out of executive session?
She's coming on. I just called her.
Someone can't do a motion.
Hello.
Yes, uh, move to authorize the mayor to sign Chief Dyers amended contract to uh level seventy five, step seven.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second out of the executive session. Um, Kathy, can you give us a roll call vote on it, please?
Councilmember Dotree.
Hi.
Councilmember Peter Shagan.
Hi.
Councilmember Frederick.
Hi.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Hi.
Councilmember Ewing.
Hi.
Councilmember Taggett.
Hi.
Motion carries six zero zero with Councilmember George Stad absent.
Okay, we had a great uh session tonight. Good meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Close the favor.
Hi.
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 All right, everybody.
Hi.
Hi.
Good night.